Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our June regular board meeting. We're glad you're here. We appreciate you being here. And before I call the meeting to order, we want to recognize that Kelly Boyer's not here. We miss her.
She was on the telephone.
We got her on the phone, but we miss her in person. Hope she's getting to feel better. And also Angela's husband, we want to send prayers for his health also. And I'll call this meeting to order. We'll have a pledge allegiance and then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have a moment of silence and then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you very much. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll approve the agenda as presented.
A second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 3.1, approval of meeting minutes from our regular May and our work session.
A motion to approve the agenda.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. 3.1. Oh, sorry. I did. Sorry. 4.1, ratification of expenses and payroll vouchers, tax credits, and activity accounts. Anybody have any questions or anything?
They're just extremely high. We're at that time of year.
End of the year, lots of payments.
Closing the POs, finally getting...
End of salary payments.
I move to approve the extended chairs as presented.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 5.1, culinary presentation. Mr. Crawford. Oh, I thought he was bringing us... I thought you were bringing danishes tonight. I thought that was the... Oh, that was...
I was hoping to have a student with me, but they decided they couldn't make it.
Okay.
This is my... I don't know if I have to do this annually or not, but my annual presentation about the School-Based Enterprise for Culinary Arts and the CTSO FCCLA Culinary Arts. We're going to be trying to do a few things this year. Expanding some, trying to get the community a little more involved, so we're not always hitting the same people for financial assistance or whatever you want to call it as fundraisers. One of the differences I put in the letter was more of what the student involvement is. The students actually have to do all the pricing. They have to figure out how much everything costs to determine what they're going to sell it for, what actually gets sold at each event and activity. Our first event, we're going to continue with tailgating. I do have a very good news for tailgating. We are getting through the, either the Perkins or Priority Grant, Jerry would know where it came from. We're getting two branded canopies. They have our sponsors who give us the biggest donations and things like that. And a lot of it's just time spent with the students and stuff like that, so they'll be advertised on there along with some really nice tops and a permanent pricing list that we'll be able to change as costs of food changes. So it won't be like we have to buy a new one every year, or it'll be Velcroed on and off. So we have our tailgating, which we'll be doing pretty much the same thing. Last year, we experimented with doing quesadillas. The public really likes quesadillas. So we added quesadillas. The other one is Friday breakfast. We used to do Friday breakfast where we would serve one item per week, like we'd have a regular breakfast, then we'd have biscuits and gravy, and then we'd have burritos. This year, we're going to expand it to where we're going to do pretty much all three items that we do: regular breakfast, biscuits and gravy, and French toast and/or burritos, whichever they want, with a graduated price scale to cover the difference in cost between biscuits and gravy and just a regular breakfast. But we're also going to serve it until 9:30. I still have to get with food services to see if I can use the cafeteria portion of their kitchen for the public to actually be able to sit down and eat at a table and not sitting on a bench that's up off the ground feeling like a little kid because their feet don't touch the ground. But otherwise, I've got room in my kitchen that they can eat, but I want to... We're going to serve it until 9:30 this year, giving the public more chances to come in. We're also going to use the public service announcements and the what's happening announcements on the five radio stations that I listen to, one of them, to advertise to the public to get, again, more involvement of the public, getting more ways of drawing people, seeing what we're doing in the Culinary Arts Department, expanding the footprint, and letting the community know more about what these kids are actually doing. Other one is food products. We found that we had mediocre success with food products, but again, the students are going to do more advertising, what's up, public service announcements, getting the community more involved with helping to raise the funds to fund the program and their FCCLA activities. Last one is two catering projects. I'm hoping to be able to do two catering projects this year where we would make it available for anybody, a school, to say we'd like to have the Culinary Arts Department cater a food product. Standard food pricing is not going to be like, "Well, you're a Culinary Arts Department, so you should be doing this for free." That just doesn't make any sense. We're trying to get the kids to understand how to run a business, and businesses don't make... They don't succeed if they don't make money. So they have to understand that they make money. This is also... This is part of the School-Based Enterprise. All of these activities also meet their work-based learning requirements, so we get to that 120 hours a whole lot easier than trying to come up with goofy ideas of things to do in class. This is stuff that they'll be doing. Most of it is outside of class time, so it does involve a lot of their involvement. With that, again, students do all the pricing. Anything that they want to do over and above any of this, they would then have to come and present as an additional fundraising item, but we tried to include as many of them as we could. Do I have any questions from the illustrious School Board Superintendent Courtney Morris Shaly?
I just love the involvement of the students because they not only participate in preparing the food, assembling it, but they also take it a step further with, you know, someone works behind a register, it's food service at its best, so thank you.
Well, that's one of the benefits of Culinary Arts. I just went through back in May, no, first part of June, the, yeah, May and then June, the rewrite of Culinary Arts. One of our standards, which works really well, is we kept School-Based Enterprise as one of our technical standards. So it's not just something they, "Okay, you have to do a school..." This is part of their standard. Running a cash register, deciding on what pricing is, having to figure out what their base cost is, so that they can determine what to sell it at to make money. So it involves quite a bit of math and skills, and then they've got to put their selling skills together. They're upselling, they're talking to the public.
I really enjoy coming in for the Friday breakfast. It's an opportunity for me to get a breakfast. I actually am usually off on Friday, so I'm able to take that to my wife, and we're able to have breakfast together, and so I really appreciate that. I love when you walk in, they greet you, and, you know, they do their best to make it a true experience, and I know you coach them up, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
We do what we can to make sure that they're the ones running the program. It's not... It's instructor-advised, student-led.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let us know what you need.
I will.
Give us a phone call. You got my number, right?
Yeah, I know who you are.
All right.
Thank you.
Let us know. Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Item 5.2, principal reports. Mr. Dr. Farnsworth, sorry.
So I want to excuse all of our principals. They are in Flagstaff at the moment, attending a legal conference put on by our insurance company, The Trust. I was there with them and drove back for the board meeting tonight, and so they're not going to be here in person, but they've submitted some of their reports, and so I just appreciate what they do and that they're getting trained up, and we were learning a lot.
Perfect. 5.3, superintendent report. Dr. Farnsworth.
So just a few highlights. The end of the year, as you know, was pretty busy. We had a lot of end-of-the-year ceremonies, and I attended as many as I could at all the different campuses. We had our last Visions Committee meeting, and that's going to be a later action item as we talk about our Visions Committee process. I enjoyed the end-of-the-year process of meeting with all the directors, all the principals, reviewing the SMART goals that we established at the beginning of the year and seeing their progress. A couple things that I would just like to bring to the board's attention is our next board meeting, well, we have a joint city council, School Board meeting at the City Council, June 19th. So please make sure that's on your calendar.
Do you have the time?
It's going to start at 6:00.
Ah, 6:00 PM.
Courtney and I met with the city manager and some of his staff this week just to make sure everything was planned out, and so they're ready, they're excited, and so that's going to be June 19th at the City Hall, not here, across the street.
I'll be out of town. Would you be able to zoom me in?
We will. We will. I'll ask Courtney to help me with that. If not, we can probably phone you in.
Okay.
But we'll do something.
Thank you.
You might get with the city. They might have...
Yep.
If that happens.
The summer's going quickly. So new teacher orientation is basically five weeks away, and then the back-to-school all district is July 25th, so if you want to put that on your calendar. We're going to do the same thing as we did last year. We're going to have everyone meet in auditorium July 25th in the morning. I don't have an exact time yet. It's probably going to be 8:30 or 9:00. We'll introduce all the board, and then we do have a special speaker by the name of Julie Schmidt who will speak to the district.
I personally am hoping to be gone most of those days, so...
He needs a vacation. Are there any other questions or anything for Dr. Farnsworth? Want to move on? Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to 6.1, vision, mission, and guiding principles. Dr. Farnsworth. I don't know if you want to... I know there's some people here that helped out or part of that committee. Do you want to visit with them before or after you talk?
You know what? Let's just have them come up, and then we can kind of fill in the gaps after they're done.
Okay. I got Susan, and then Joel, and then Pastor Heckathor. Is that... Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
So my name is Susan Midkiff, and I had the pleasure of working on the Visions Committee, and I just wanted to say, and I recognize some faces. I wanted to recognize the leadership of Dr. Farnsworth and Charlotte Cosgray. First of all, that we were able to accomplish finishing the vision and mission within our timeframe really speaks to their leadership, but also, if you were not in the room, you did not hear all of the passionate voices. The committee really was comprised of people who are just so passionate, not only about the school district, our schools, and our teachers and our students, but also about the town of Cholo, the city of Cholo. And a lot of them had a lot to share. They had a lot to talk about, and Dr. Farnsworth did a great job of balancing letting their voice be heard and letting them share how they felt and their concerns and their vision, but then also keeping us on track and keeping us, we always ended on time, and that we were able to finish the project on time. So that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Weeks.
It's good to be with you all. Thank you so much, Joe, for the opportunity to serve on the committee. I think we had good representation, and it was a real enjoyable experience for me. I learned a lot about some people I didn't know. I was there with a lot of friends as well, but it was a wonderful experience, and I think the product that we came up with will serve the district well for many, many years to come. At least, that's my hope, and it was a pleasure to be a part of it, and thank you so much, and I appreciate what you as School Board members do and you as staff do, and it's a rough job. The four of my six kids were educated here, and you did a pretty darn good job back then as well, but I think this hire of Brother, of Dr. Farnsworth is amazing. He's brought some amazing tools to the table, I think, and you did a good job in searching him out and hiring him, and it's a pleasure to be a part of this community and a part of this school district, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. My name's Steve Heckathor. I was asked to be part of this committee, which kind of came out of the blue for me, and my first thought was, well, you know, what can I impart? The reality is, you know, I raised kids, put them through school. I've been a citizen of Cholo since 2011, and so as I thought about it, I realized, you know, the school district is just a microcosm of the community it's in. It really is. And as somebody, I've been in Cholo since 2011, and somebody who's moved here from another community here in the White Mountains, one of the things about Cholo is I love its dedication to excellence as a city. And what I saw in this process was a complete dedication to excellence for the city of Cholo, the school district, excuse me, the school district, and what I saw in that was just, we want to be the best we can be. And as somebody who lives in Cholo, I think that the Cholo School District is just a reflection of the city of Cholo as a town, as a community, and who we are as people and citizens of the community. I know the process was a dedication of excellence for not just we as people participating, but it was a process of excellence for administrators, for the teachers, for everybody involved. One of the things is, it's one of the most strategic, best strategic programs I've ever been a part of. I've been a part of strategic planning in many different cases, but this is probably one of the best I've ever been a part of. Joe, you're a great facilitator. You kept us on task, you kept us on course, you kept us completely active and engaged, and it was truly just a great process. And what I found out is there's a lot of people in Cholo that love the city and love the school, the city, the school district of Cholo, and that, you don't see that in every community. I came from a community where there was not so much of that involved in the process. So for me, it was probably one of the greatest experiences I have ever seen in a consensus building program, and that is key to building something like this. Can you have consensus? And Joe, I think you led us greatly in that. I want to thank the board itself, the facilitators, Joe, and your team that put this together. For me, this was pure joy, and I enjoyed every moment of it. And so I thank the School Board and the administrators for even letting me be a part of this, and I'm like, Joe, I learned a lot about people I didn't know, a lot about people I did know. What I learned is this school district is dedicated to excellence, and I want to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. If you didn't attend this, you missed out on something special. It was truly enjoyable to see all those people come together and the product that came out of it, so...
Can I make a comment?
I'm just really thankful for each and every person that participated.
Well, I want to thank the three people that are here. We did have a much larger group. I want to especially thank Charlotte. Charlotte, please stand. She was my thought partner, and we bounced ideas off of each other, but just for those of you who are at home, what we tried to accomplish was bring in community members that are well-respected across all aspects of life. We had a five-month process where we met once a month, and the goal was to look at our vision, look at our mission, reevaluate it to see if it still holds up to today, and the committee decided to craft a new vision, a new mission, which we're going to recommend to the board to officially adopt tonight with guiding principles. And what was really neat about the whole process was the community was telling me and telling the School Board, this is what they value. And Mr. Heckathor, I agree. We want to be excellent. I want, when people hear the word "Cholo School District," I want them to once again feel like that is a premier school district in the entire state of Arizona, and I think we have the potential to do it. We have pockets of excellence, and we have hard-working individuals, but I think we haven't hit our potential yet, and this is the first step. So this now gives me, it gives the School Board, some marching orders that now we have to deliver. I have to go back to the whole school district, share this process when we come back in July, which I plan on doing campus by campus, and then just say, "These are the marching orders, and we..." Our goal is excellence, and I'm just really excited for the feedback, for the participation for me to now start executing what the community wants us to deliver. And I know we had several board members here. I don't know if you want to make any comments or...
I've... It was just such a great process. I don't know that I can do it any more justice by speaking anymore.
Well, I was new to the group, and I truly thought I was the only one who didn't already have friends in the community that I was raised with, but meeting everyone and seeing everyone work together for the greater good was very refreshing. It truly was rewarding, not just for us board members, but to come together to a guiding principle, as you pointed out. I really enjoyed it. Kelly?
I just wanted to add that I'm so thankful for members of our community through all walks. There were former graduates who loved Cholo schools, and there were people who had not been in the community for so long but have learned to love our community and Cholo schools and wanted to be a part of this group effort, and I'm so grateful for their sacrifice of time, and I'm grateful for their knowledge and the things that we learned from them and came out with a wonderful product. And I too thank Dr. Farnsworth and Charlotte for overseeing it, keeping us on task, and I love what we've developed, and I thank everybody.
I think you should read it.
This is an action item, right?
This is an action item. We're asking the board to formally adopt our new vision, mission, and guiding principles, which it's on the board docs. Every board member has a copy, and once this is official, then we're going to look at marketing, producing posters, and all of the next things.
I don't want to vote on this until we actually, you know, get it in the ears of people, and if you're okay, since there's three parts to this and we have three members of the committee, would you be willing to come up, each one of you, and read one of these sections for us? Susan? And then there's one on that one, and there's two on this one. You got it?
This is that one, what's written here.
All right.
So...
You know what I'm going to say, too.
We're going to read this and these two? Right?
Yes, sir. Whatever you'd like.
Oh.
Or is that the same thing over here?
This.
It's the same thing.
Well, that's the same thing. Okay, I'm sorry.
One has the guiding principles.
Okay, okay. Sorry.
Okay. All right. So I'm only doing part of this, gentlemen. All right. "We are the Cougars, unified in excellence. Our Cougar culture fosters opportunities where every individual is empowered to achieve their fullest potential, where academic excellence and high expectations thrive. In doing so, we cultivate leadership and nurture lifelong contributors to society."
We'll just keep the same order. Okay, the...
You want to read half of the guiding principles and then...
Yeah, I will. I'll read five of them. "We believe respect is at the core of everything we do. We demonstrate respect in our actions and our relationships. We value community involvement. Teamwork with a shared vision creates a united community focused on student success. We believe in clear communication. Honest, respectful communication is crucial for student success and growth. We value accountability..." for student success and growth. We value accountability. We take responsibility for our actions and expect the same from others. And we believe hard work leads to success. Perseverance and effort are keys to achieving goals." Steve, the rest are yours. Hope they're not...
Okay. So, the guiding principle, one, two, three, four. "We value a safe and supportive learning environment. Every student deserves a positive and nurturing space to grow. We believe in high expectation for all students. Every student should be encouraged to achieve their fullest potential, whether academic, social, or personal. We uphold the standard of excellence and strive to continually raise it. We value fiscal responsibility. We use resources wisely for the benefit of our students, staff, and community. We believe learning goes beyond the classroom. We support student growth through academics, sports, and the arts. We value and support our employees. Passionate, dedicated employees are key to student success. We invest in their growth, well-being, and collaboration."
Thanks very much. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah. Not being in one of these meetings, I don't know Susan that well. Would love to get to know you better. Joel and Steve, been involved with them in the community and love them. It wasn't by accident that Dr. Farnsworth came here. He's a great man. In the past, we haven't had as great a leadership as what we've had now, as what we have now. And having the community involved is a win-win because you know what's going on. You know, we might not see everything that goes on because frankly, the only people we get to see mostly at these board meetings are people that are mad at us. And it's nice to see people that aren't mad at us. What a great idea. Something that's been lacking. And I highly thank you for what you've done and for the time that you've spent, the time that you will spend, because I know you're not quitting, whether it be in this committee or in committees to come. We need your input. We want your input and we appreciate your input. Thank you.
With that said, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt. Yeah. Whatever it is we're adopting.
Vision, mission, and guiding principles.
That one.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Item 6.2, proposed budget FY '26. Haley Davis, please.
Well, it's that time of year. So, I had the pleasure of attending Heinfeld and Meach's annual conference and they always have it this time of year, which was wonderful. They gave us some updated information on what the legislature is doing. And they've told us that, as we know, the legislature has just gone back into session and they are anticipating to have a passed budget by June 30 for education. But the bills that they're still working on will probably not be passed till later in the fall. So, at least we will have hopefully a budget, a base budget for education. So, we're going to go over that. Now, I don't know how detailed you got into the budget. They have changed the budget forms quite drastically this year. So, they might be a bit confusing, which I want to talk about a little bit before I get into my presentation so that you can better understand. A lot of times, or in the past, we have really looked at the increase and decrease from the prior year to the current year. This year, it's way off. And the reason being is they added a new line to the budget this year, which is line 31 where it says, and on page two of the budget, where it says, "Maintained for spending after FY '26." That is the budget carryforward. So, they no longer allow us to put the carryforward budget within the budget lines. So, the only thing in the budget lines is the current year's budget. So, the FY '26 budget is the only thing that is on the line item budgets. So, it makes, so this year, that prior year has all the budget, including the carryforward. But the new budget year, the FY '26, only has the FY '26 budget, not including the carryforward. So, those increases and decreases are very skewed. So, they're not accurate. So, next year, when we do the FY '27 budget, they'll be more accurate because they'll be one-to-one. Does that make sense? Okay. So, that number on line 31, the 5,000, or sorry, 5 million, that is our carryforward, estimated carryforward at this time. That won't be accurate until after we do the AFR in October and then we'll have the actual carryforward. But this is a very good carryforward. It's what we kind of anticipated. It's very similar to last year's carryforward. Again, we talked about this in our work session where everybody was very fiscally responsible this year. We still got done what we needed to get done. Projects have been getting done. Everybody got what they needed in the classroom. But we were very fiscally responsible because we wanted to give those raises based on that salary study and everything. But that's what we're looking at or close to. We still have some summer projects that need to get done. There's bills that still need to get paid. So, this is not the final number. So, I wanted to explain to you what this all means, these line items. It's like this for the maintenance and operation fund, classroom site fund, and the capital. They all have this additional line now and they're doing it this way for each of those funds. So, I wanted to make sure you understood how this new budget is, how they're doing it now, how ADE is doing that. So, with that being said, I'll go over my presentation. So, the enrollment is projecting flat, no change in enrollment. It's 2302 at this time. Last year was 2304, very flat. So, we really need to work on enrollment this next year, bring it up so we can increase our budget. The per pupil funding, we are expecting that 2%. The current budget that I'm presenting to you tonight does not have that 2%. So, this is a good budget without the 2%. So, with that extra 2%, that will give us additional funding. So, really looking forward to that. Per pupil DAA, which again is the capital, there is absolutely no increase for this next year. So, it is flat, which that pays for all the facilities, all those extra projects. If we needed any new buses, that's where that money comes from. So, that's a disappointment. The TEI, Teacher Experience Index, is decreased from 1.0163 to 1.0042, which means our teachers, the experience of our teachers is decreased again. This is the second year. It's decreased. So, it's important that we try and hire experienced teachers, which we know is hard to do. But that's where we get additional funding as well. Classroom site fund, that did increase, went from 792 to 842. And that's where the teachers got their additional raise this year. So, when that increases, that's good for the teachers because then they get additional money. Any questions on that piece? Yes?
CSF, the classroom site fund, has a limit. What, I'm just asking hypothetically, what do we do when we go over budget?
We can't go over budget.
Oh, it just...
Oh, no.
Cannot happen.
We cannot.
Okay.
If we go over budget, that would be a huge audit finding.
Oh, of course. And then, as I was going over the paperwork, what is a truth in taxation notice? Can you explain that?
Truth in taxation is if we have to ask for additional taxes because we are under, we have overspent our budget.
I see. Okay.
Yeah. So, when you overspend your budget, that means you have to ask for additional taxes to get that money back.
Understand.
Yep. And this school district has done very well and we haven't had to do that in, I don't know if we've ever have, to be honest.
Yeah.
Kelly, you would know better, but I have not seen that in this district.
Wonderful. Thank you.
We have a healthy cash flow here.
Very good.
Okay. The MNO budget for right now is 23.8 million. Estimated 5-point million budget carryforward, which is a reduction from last year's carryforward of 1 million, which again is not bad. Elimination of Prop 123. Joe wanted to speak a little bit about that.
So, if you've been following the state legislature, the governor has proposed that the state legislature, because there's an expiration date for Prop 123 and they want to extend it. There are elected officials that are holding Prop 123 hostage because they want to enshrine school vouchers in the state constitution permanently. So, basically what they're saying is, we're not going to give teachers a raise through Prop 123 unless we get the votes from other people in the House and the Senate to approve the enshrinement or permanent school vouchers in the constitution. So, it's a political football at this time. Don't know what's going to happen. What I've heard is that it's going to go out to the voters in October. But again, that's kind of where we are with the state of politics in Arizona.
That's exactly what Heinfeld and Meach said today as well. So, they're saying that it will probably go out to the voters. Elimination of the free and reduced and capital supplemental funding, that was an extra, again, supplemental funding that we got of about 169. That is going to be, they're talking that that will go away as well. The capital budget is 3.1 million. It's a decrease of 1.4 from 2025. It's an estimated 2.1 budget balance carryforward, which is an increase from last year. So, if you remember, last year I moved 1 million from the MNO budget over into capital. So, this year, I am moving 1 million from capital over into MNO to help with MNO. So, it might get moved back. Again, we're going to have to wait and see till the final budget is done with the state and seeing how much we actually need. It looks like we are going to need more in capital again because we can do more capital and because we have enough budget in the MNO to cover all of our expenses without reducing any money for supplies, purchase services. We have to keep up our budget for sped based on our maintenance of effort. So, everything looks well in both areas. Again, with that 2%, sure, we would like the additional money for Prop 123 and the supplemental. But, you know, we've done really well in this district this year. Again, I'm very happy with what we've done this year. So, that is the MNO and capital budget. Any questions on this so far? Okay. So, we did want to, we, oops, I'm going to back. There we go. I went a little too fast. So, we had talked in the work sessions about the grants and how those have been being reduced this year. So, I wanted to briefly show you the grants and how much we got in '25, the base allocation, based on this year's, what we're getting for the base allocation this year. Now, on the '25 base allocation, this was after we got the overall allocation, which comes in about October, November, December, around there. Whereas the FY '26, this is right now. So, it's, there's a little, these are just estimates. But we are losing quite a bit of funding. It's a total of 473,000 at this time. But almost every single grant that we're getting were being reduced this year. We're losing our rural and low-income grant altogether. So, we got 76,000 last year. We are getting absolutely nothing this year. We're, our comprehensive support and improvement grant, we had 40,000 last year. We're getting nothing this year. So, you can see the reductions that we're getting, which is pretty hefty. And so, where do we have to supplement that? Maintenance and operation. So, we've had to make some cuts in some areas. But Jamie and I are working very closely together with Dr. Farnsworth on how we're going to, you know, supplement some of these. Again, Title II pays for our professional development, which is huge. And so, we're going to have to make some cuts there. But we really wanted you to see how this is going to impact the district.
And this is a moving target, so...
Yes, absolutely.
As you can see, with the new federal administration, there's a lot of different estimates that we're getting. And so, we're trying to be conservative with what we're getting. But it's substantial. When you go from one budget year to another and you're going to be down half a million dollars that you didn't anticipate for, it's going to be, you know, we've had conversations with principals and it's been hard, you know, because we're talking programs and people and things that really impact kids in the classroom.
Question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Paul.
Seeing that reduction in funds, and this is a budget, could things happen, you know, like the government can make decisions that would change some of this or is this locked and sealed?
No, they can make decisions. This is not locked. Like you said, it's a...
Do we anticipate anything better from the legislature or from the other guys? No?
We're not, we're not a state that has legislators that value education.
We don't?
No. That's our, that's the problem. I hope they're watching.
Some of these grants do, we are allowed to carry over our balance if we don't use it this year. So, Title I will have a bit of a balance. IDEA will have some balance that we'll carry over to this year, but it's not a whole lot. So...
They already have a shortfall, right?
What's that?
They already have a small shortfall, right?
Yeah.
Couple hundred million dollars.
Yeah.
What does that affect us and impact us if they don't make their payment like they're saying? They're not going to finish the budget by the 13th, right?
We're okay because we have, we have a decent amount of cash. So, we're fine. They will make the payment. It's just not going to be on time. But we have enough cash to cover us. So, we're good there. But there are a lot of districts that that's going to hurt pretty bad.
But as we go through the years, our cash supply is dwindling.
Well, like you said, they still pay. They just don't pay on time. And so, but we have a surplus of cash. So, we're good. Like you said, they pay, just not on time. They're like a couple months behind. So, we're good. Now, if they got like a year behind, that might be another story. But the state has always done that since, I mean, when Joe and I were in Pima, they would be, they wouldn't pay their last payment till September. They've been doing this for a year.
It's an accounting gimmick that they're using to roll the debt into the next fiscal year so they can balance this year's. So, basically, they're kicking the can down the road every year so they can balance their budget. But it's rolling the debt into the next fiscal year because they don't have the money. So, eventually...
A lot of state agencies kind of do that.
Yeah. Which is not a good practice.
Wouldn't think so.
We don't get to do that with our mortgage, do we?
Wouldn't it be right if we...
Like, hey, I'm going to kick my mortgage down a month.
Yeah. Don't worry about it, guys.
Any other question on this grant slide? Oh, and also, so one, because I didn't have the numbers when I did this, E-rate. They're talking about E-rate going away. That would be about $68,000 for us.
And E-rate impacts technology. It's the connectivity, which is, it really does help us with connectivity issues.
Yep. Recommended new expenditures for next year. So, again, classified staff increased due to salary study. It was an average increase of about 14%, so a total of $569,000. Our classified staff minimum wage. So, as you know, the minimum wage goes up every year in January. It's currently $14.70. That will only affect event workers next year because now all our staff, because of the salary study, are lowest paid. uh, because now all our staff, because of the salary study, our lowest paid staff members at sixteen dollars and fifty cents. So that will not impact any of our staff this next year, except for, again, the event workers.
Jamie, is there an end to the?
That.
Minimum wage increase yearly?
Probably not. Not that I've heard.
I know we voted it in, I just didn't remember if it had a.
I'm not sure, yeah. Um, the increase in health insurance premium is nine percent, which is about three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, increase in classroom base pay to teachers and counselors was two thousand per one FTE, which came to about three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars. And then the increase to the administrative pay was about a four percent of their current base, which was about one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. So those are, this is just some of the, um, new expenses. And then, um, increasing.
Can I?
Yes.
Ask something right there? I know that we're covering the health insurance.
Yes.
Increases this year.
Yes.
Uh, have we talked about where we're going forward with that next year?
Yes, we will.
Have we talked about that a little bit?
Mm-hmm, so next year we will be looking at pushing some of the that cost to the employees next year.
Sad.
Yeah. Because there's just no way we can continue to, um, take on those costs, especially if it's going to be, um, nine percent or higher. It's typical that, um, health insurance continues to rise each year.
Imagine that.
And if it does, we may have to look at possibly changing insurances.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So there's going to be an increase in utilities. It's usually about eight to ten dot ten percent, but thanks to some changes, that should go down a bit. So we think we think those two contributed to the fixing of the well as well as the, uh, change in the meter over at Nicholas. We should see some great decreases in our utilities this next year, even with an increase to the rates. The, again, the E-rate potential elimination, I had put it on this slide, I didn't have the amount at the time. Um, increase in sped staffing, so it's about one-hundred-and-seventeen. Uh, we added a behavioral interventionist. Um, we had to add a paraprofessional. Uh, we have a student that we need a one-on-one for, so that will be there. And there's always changes to sped, um, depending on new students that come in that need, um, specialized paras. Um, so that that's always, that one's always a moving target as well. Um, and then various capital expenses, always, um, technology facilities. Um, again, I talked about buses. Um, again, we really want to get those parking lots fixed. So Dr. Farnsworth and I have talked about that and doing that one in phases. So there, we really need to work on our capital issues this year. So that, along with the Phase Two of our salary study, um, we, that's going to be, I think, our focus this next year is Phase Two of the salary study and really working on our facilities and technology for this next year. Any questions on the budget? Now, again, just to remind you, this is the proposed budget. It will be coming back to you in July as the adopted budget. We cannot change it. We have to adopt it, um, in July. And then we can do a revised budget starting in September, um, based off of what the the legislature approves. So I'll entertain any questions.
I'll move to approve the proposed twenty-five-twenty-six budget as presented.
A second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-point-three, classified transfers, resignations, terminations. Dr. Farnsworth.
As you can see, we do have a few resignations from the end of the year. But I think we're looking pretty good. We're only looking for two more spots, um, as far as I know, for next year at the moment, so.
I move to approve all classified personnel employee actions as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Want to wish these ladies well. We're going to miss them. They're much needed, but wish them all in their endeavors.
Out of six-point-four, certified transfers, resignations, employment. Dr. Farnsworth.
So you can see that we are going to be moving some counselors. Uh, and we recommend that the board approve those. I've spoken with with all the counselors, I've spoken with all the campus principals and, uh, and got some advice from our directors. And, uh, we feel like in the best interest of the district that these counselors be moved to these new locations. Um, if you look at the resignation of one of our our counselors, you can see that there's there's a, an option for liquidated damages. And I've added some context to that particular counselor. So I'd ask that you consider that in your in your motion.
Can the motion be what's recommended there?
Yes, sir.
And and that'll and that'll work for our needs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Then I'll move to approve the, uh, Certified Personnel Employment Act.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-point-five, classified personnel employment, Dr. Farnsworth.
So our principals have been, well, this is classified. So our directors have been busy filling, um, different spots. And so ask that you look at those and then approve those for this coming year.
I move to approve the Classified Personnel Employee Actions as presented.
A second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six-six, Certified Personnel Employment, Dr. Farnsworth.
So I'm super pleased with our principals. They've been very active in the hiring season. Um, I feel we do have two spots that are going to be challenging, to be honest with you. Um, just because we're in a teacher shortage, there's a national teacher shortage. And then one of the spots that we're looking to fill is a sped teaching spot, which that's like a unicorn. So we'll we'll do our best, but I'm very pleased with with how proactive our principals have been in searching for for teachers.
I move to approve the Certified Personnel Positions as presented.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-seven, Summer Activity Stipend Schedule, FY twenty-six.
So these are the, um, summer stipends for the camps, the coordinators, the supervisors. Um, so this is for the whole summer, um, including June and July. But they, there's, the stipends will be split between June and July. So half will be given in June and half will be given in July. So we ask that you approve these.
I'll move to approve the Summer Activity Stipend Schedule as presented.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six-point-eight, Food Service Permanent Agreement, Ms. Davis.
So when, this is for the state, so when, um, there's a change in administration and in the Food Service Department, um, we have to submit this permanent agreement to ADE. Um, and so this is what this is, giving Dr. Farnsworth the authority to sign for food service as well as myself and then the new director and our bookkeeper. So we ask that you approve this to send to ADE.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fiscal Year Twenty-five Cooperative Agreement as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Can I add a comment to that, please, Mr. President? Um, I just, John Joyner's here from FSC. Um, we have been super pleased with the the change in the quality of food. And I just want to publicly thank him, um, what they're doing for our district. It's been a hundred-and-eighty-degree turnaround. Um, we've already gotten huge compliments from the wrestling camp that we just had this week. Um, so we're just, I just want to publicly recognize the change because it was not good. And and we expressed our our displeasure because our kids were not getting the quality food that they deserved. And I'm proud to say that with with John and his team, things have drastically changed for the better. And so I just want to publicly say that, that we're in a much better position. So thank you, John.
Perfect. Thank you. Six-point-nine, Longevity and Cell Phone Stipends, Ms. Davis.
So this is the cell phone and longevity stipends for FY twenty-six, so for next school year, um, as well as, uh, the car allowance for myself for next year that we ask that you approve.
Is there any changes from the previous year to this?
Um, there were two, there was, I believe, two additions, uh, that hit their mark to get the longevity.
Cool. And I'll make a motion to approve longevity and cell phone and car allowance stipends as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-point-one-zero Cooperative Agreement FY twenty-five, Ms. Davis.
So each year, um, that we have to have the board approve all the cooperatives that we use to do our procurement. Um, so these are the list of the of the co-ops that we use. Um, so we ask the board that you approve this for FY twenty-six.
I move to approve the Fiscal Year Twenty-six Cooperative Purchasing Agreement as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-point-one-one Cooperative Purchasing FY twenty-six, Ms. Davis.
So this is similar to what you approved last month, but this is just the, um, purchases that will hit over a thousand dollars that are through a cooperative. Last month, it was any vendor that hit over a hundred thousand, even if it was a cooperative. So I ask that you approve these vendors that will hit over a hundred thousand that are through a cooperative.
You save a lot of money with the cooperatives.
Not necessarily, but.
Seriously.
Yeah, because.
Why are we in them then?
Because, um, to do and go out for RFP, it take, it, some of the times, it can take three to six months to go through that process.
What is RFP?
Uh, Request For Bid.
Oh, okay. I'm learning.
So the time, the time.
Yes. Mm-hmm, and sometimes we don't have that time. A lot of times, we don't have that time. They do try and get the best price, but most of those cooperatives are down in the valley. And so it's just real hard.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty-six Cooperative Agreement as presented.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six-point-one-two, Sole Source Vendor.
So anytime we have a vendor that we can't get additional bids for, they're the only vendor that provides that service or that item to purchase, it has to be approved by the board, by the board, sorry. Um, we have to do a lot of due diligence and research before, um, we do this. Uh, the auditors really scrutinize these, uh, because it's very rare that something is sole source. So, um, our new procurement specialist did a lot of work to make sure that this was sole source. So, um, this is for, um, the, um, early childhood care program, and it's their, um, doll simulator, simulators that they use. And so we ask that you approve this sole source vendor.
We don't have a lot of sole source vendors, do we?
No, we only have like three.
Yeah.
We don't have very many.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve the sole source vendor reality works as presented.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass, motion passes six-point-one-three, Comp Payout.
So, um, as of last year, when I got here, it was decided that we start paying out comp time at the end of every fiscal year, instead of letting it accumulate and then paying it out when they leave. Uh, because if they don't use it by the end of the fiscal year, it it means they just can't use it. So it's better to pay it out at the end of each fiscal year and get it off the books and not have that liability. So I'm asking that we pay out this year's comp. This is an estimated amount because we still have two payrolls. Um, but it's about, going to be about five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. So I ask that we, you approve me to pay out the comp time at the end of this fiscal year.
I'll move to approve the unused comp time be paid out for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five as presented.
A second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-point-one-four Robotics IGA Funding, Ms. Davis.
So as you know, we have a great robotics program at the high school. And so, uh, Mr. Gillespie always, um, goes out to the, uh, Arizona Department of Education and receives an annual support from them. And so they require an IGA for him to get these extra funds. And so this is, um, the IGA with Arizona Department of Education for him to get, uh, kind of like a grant for ten thousand dollars.
I move to approve the Robotics IGA Funding as presented with ADE.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-point-one-five, SFE Renewal for FY twenty-five, twenty-six, Ms. Davis.
All right, so each year, so we are, we are in a contract, a multi-year contract with SFE, which is our food ser, food management company. Wow. And so each year, we do have to renew that contract. So we are in year two of a five-year contract. So this is just the renewal contract for this year for, with SFE.
I move to approve the contract renewal with SFE for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six as presented.
A second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-point.
Mom, I had a question on, um, that to, I wanted to see if the breakfast and lunch prices had been determined for this upcoming school year yet?
We currently are not increasing them this year.
Okay, so we'll be approving them next month?
No, 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 we're not increasing them. We're increasing them next year.
Okay, so they will stay the same. Okay, great, thank you.
You bet.
Six-point-one-six, Navit IGA FY twenty-five, twenty-six, Ms. Davis.
So again, um, with Navit, we have to, um, approve our IGA with them each year. So this is our, um, IGA with them, which includes an est, um, estimated budget. So the estimated budget is the same as this year, forty-seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. But after talking to, um, Mr. Butler, um, he does think that that's going to increase. Um, he anticipates, uh, an increase in classes due to the, um, increase in, um, graduation requirements for this.
Yeah, well, we approved a month or two ago, correct?
Correct. So, um, that should increase, which is great. It's a good program, so, um, this is, I ask that you approve the IGA with Navit this, for this next year.
I'll move to approve the Navit IGA with Corresponding Exhibits as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-point-one-seven, Designate Student Activity Treasurer, Ms. Davis.
Okay, again, this is an annual requirement that the board approves the Student Activity Treasurer. Um, that is myself, I'm the student, I'm the Student Activity Treasurer with Charlotte Cosgrave and Jamie Ramsey as the Assistant Student Activity Treasurer.
I read this and thought, they already do so much. Thank you for all that you do, ladies. I'll move to approve the, I I move to approve Shaila Davis as the Student Activities Treasurer and Charlotte Cosgrave and Jamie Ramsey as Assistant Student Activity Treasurers.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-point-one-eight, Student Athletic and CTE Fee Schedule for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, so each year, we have to approve the fee schedule. Um, so this year, there was a slight increase as well as we added CTE course fees. Um, it's a small in, uh, course fee, it's fifteen dollars per course for, per student. Um, so again, we just ask that you approve these fees for this year. Any questions on any of them?
Have we always, or is this new?
Approve these?
No.
Oh.
Um, having the student fees for both athletics and activities.
Yes.
Yes.
We've always had these, yeah, it's it's a requirement, it's an ARS statute that we have these.
Are increases for athletics? Is there an increase for athletics?
Shaila, can I ask why we added the CTE course fee?
They needed...
Ask for it.
They don't, yeah, they, the CTE asked for these fees.
Is it for administrative costs, or is it a student fee that we pay to Navit, or...
No, no.
It's a student fee, so for example, in culinary, they consume a lot of supplies, right? And they're perishable. And so when we, when we talk to the CTE director and the teachers, there was a desire, like, they need some help in supporting their consumables, especially in culinary, for example. And so we feel like a $15, once a year, skin in the game kind of fee will help support all the CTE programs in their supplies. This is not administration. This goes directly back into the classroom, directly for the supplies.
Very good, thank you for explaining.
And I'm Scott, what was the increase for, was there an increase for the athletics?
We didn't increase, uh, some, don't increase very much, but just cover...
Was it maybe like $25, maybe? I don't remember what it was.
It was 10, I think.
Was it 10?
I think it was like 140 when my kids were here.
Okay.
Is that where we're at now, 140?
150.
150.
150.
Yeah, it was a small increase, Kelly. Huh?
Cool.
Yeah, yeah, it was very small. But all the other fees stayed the same.
I move to approve the student fee schedules for fiscal year '25, '26 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6.19 general stipends FY '25, '26, Ms. Davis.
All right. Again, is the general stipends for teachers, for the extra duties that they do. We did have to eliminate some of the stipends due to the decrease in the grant funds that paid for these stipends. And we did add a lead health tech stipend. This is something that Dr. Farnsworth and I and Ms. Marsh really felt passionate about, having somebody to really lead the, the health techs and even possibly become an actual nurse for our district. We really think this is something that the district needs. So this person is becoming a nurse, right? She's going to school to become a nurse. So we're starting out with this lead health tech stipend. And then the other stipends, we did not increase at all this year. So this, they remain the same, like I said, except for the decrease or the elimination of some of the ones that were paid out of grants.
I move to approve the student fee schedules for fiscal year '25.
Oh, these are the general stipends.
These are the general stipends.
Oh, so...
Oops, my bad.
It's one nine.
It does, just...
Do you want to say student fee schedules in place of, well, goodness gracious.
We just did that.
Okay, yeah.
Is it written?
Yeah, it is.
Athletics, we just did that.
You don't want to do general stipends.
Yeah, this is general stipends.
Oh.
I supposed to say general stipends.
Okay, I move to approve general stipends for fiscal year '25, '26 as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. 6.20 school property disposal, Ms. Davis.
So these are our property disposals. There's quite a few. It's the end of the year, so everybody's going through their inventory and getting rid of the items that don't work anymore. So I ask that you approve the disposal of the listed items.
I'll make a motion to approve the board, for board approve the school property disposal information as presented by the administration.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.21 WMI summer agenda, Dr. Farnsworth.
So I would ask the board to approve the compensation of two individuals that are doing high school, summer school, and credit recovery, and these funds are being paid out of grant funds.
I move to approve the WMI summer agenda as presented.
I second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.22 lead health tech job description approval, our treasurer.
As, as you've seen over the, over the year, the turnover in our health techs is quite high. In my experience in working in, in other districts, rural and, and bigger districts, they're, they usually have like an RN that kind of is the lead health practitioner for all the other health techs or nurses in the district. That's something that I would like us to see us go to is, is right now, the burden of training and the burden of compliance is falling on our special ed director, which she's got a lot on her plate already. And so moving in a direction of having a lead health tech, hopefully that would be an RN in the future to kind of manage shot records, compliance, best practices in, in health, the health industry. So we would ask that, when you look at this job description, that you would approve it, that this is, this is a new job description. It is a new expectation that out of all the campuses, we're gonna have one, one individual take on these added duties so that they could start training and supporting and kind of being the expert with our health techs, which we think is important because we have kids that come to the nurse's office all the time.
You're keeping the hourly pay the same?
Hourly pay is the same, but they're gonna get, we just approved the stipend, and so that would be a stipend that goes along with this job duty.
And if I may, as well as she's gonna work five additional hours, most health techs only work 35, she's gonna work 40 hours.
And where will this person be based?
Well, it's gonna depend upon the qualifications. When we look at the health techs, we'll open it up, we'll advertise, and it's gonna be internal and based upon who has the, the, I guess, the best resume, the most qualifications, the one that's progressing towards an RN. That would be our thought process to, to make sure that they're in the right spot to be able to mentor, coach, train the other health techs.
Very good.
So we're hiring somebody that's progressing to an RN, not an RN?
Correct, because RNs are expensive.
I was gonna say, how can we compete with the private sector?
We can't. But some RNs are at a point where they want to be on a school schedule with their kids, potentially. They like the routine of a school year. So I've seen that happen, but in terms of financial, we can't compete. But having different options, we, we may be able to secure someone in the future.
Right, one of our alumni, that'd be great.
Dr. Farnsworth, did you say this would be an internal, she's not gonna post this?
This would be an internal posting because we want the person to be a current employee, one of our health techs that would mentor the other health techs. So having an outside person kind of would defeat the purpose at this point.
I think this is a great move in the right direction. And with that, I'll move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6.23 Vail Beyond Textbooks IGA, Dr. Farnsworth.
So this is an annual adoption by the board. We use, we, we are a collaborator with the Vail Unified School District, and we use Beyond Textbooks, which is a virtual platform that houses all of our state standards for, for all of our courses, supplemental, supplementary materials. And so we would approve, ask that you would approve our agreement with Beyond Textbooks. And if I did a lousy job explaining that, Sharla, you can fill in my gaps. Okay, thank you, Sharla.
I move to approve the Vail BT agreement as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Did we lose it?
I voted aye, I'm sorry, I missed it.
It's okay, I didn't wanna, didn't wanna roll without you. Okay, so motion passes. Item 6.24, second reading policy 1-302, Dr. Farnsworth.
So we've, we've talked about this at length with the board about call to the public and different nuances. And so you can see the changes in yellow, highlighted in yellow. We've read this before. I'm asking at this point that you would formally adopt this so then we can make this part of our policy. So for those of you that are watching from home, it would, it would, we would still offer the limited call to the public, but if you do come to speak to the school board, there's, there's expectations of no obscenity, profanity, racial slurs, threats of any kind, and you must speak on an agenda item. It's not just an open plat, open mic night, if you will.
I move to approve the policy 1-302 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6.25 sped special services contracts. Mrs. Marsh, your name is on this.
I'll, I'll just kind of speak. As, as you guys heard at our work session, Ms. Marsh did a great job explaining that there are services that we are required to provide that we just don't have the capacity or the skill set. And so, which means we have to go out and contract with vendors to provide those services. And in the work session, I did share with everyone that we would be bringing to you a list of individuals that we've contracted with in the past or potentially to contract, and you see before you what those services are, what the rate is, what they're gonna be providing. And we would ask that you would approve those vendors because we, we just don't have the, those people to do those jobs.
I move to approve the sped special contracts as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6.26 out of state travel, Dr. Farnsworth.
We have two trips that we're asking the board to approve. Just, let me see here. One is to Las Vegas for a innovative school summit. And then the other one is to Salt Lake City for the National Rural Association Conference in October, September?
October.
October. And we would ask that you would approve both of those.
I hooked up the innovative school summit. That looks really good. They're gonna have a lot of great speakers. I think that they will learn so much. It's gonna be great. I'm almost jealous, I wanna go.
Take along.
Yeah, take along.
Well, if, if I may add, if, if there are conferences or trainings that the board would ever want to attend, please tell us. We'd be happy to look into that and, and provide that for, for any one of the board members.
Thank you for that suggestion. I'll move to approve the out-of-state field trips as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6.27 gifts and donations.
We have a length, again, it, it's humbling to be in the Sholo community to see all of the community partners who step up every, I mean, sometimes multiple times in a school year. A lot of these donations that you see were for the end-of-the-year staff luncheon giveaway. We, we had lots of donations. And I don't know if Jamie or Sharla or anyone want to come. You kind of helped with the donations, Jamie. I, I think, I think I heard that this is one of the best years we had in terms of donations. So again, super appreciative. Again, I know this was mentioned earlier, our, our well was fixed. We're now off city water, so we're able to irrigate our, our fields at a, and have huge potential savings, tens of thousands, maybe over $100,000 in savings over the course of a year. So special thank you to Sholo Forward. But if you just look at this list, just tons of, of donations, it's just humbling to be in a community where you get that kind of support.
Absolutely, yeah.
So there's a big, long list. I'm, I'm not gonna read it, but for, it's, it's a, it's a very big group of lots of different people. And so we just want to make sure that those folks understand how grateful we are for their donations. The, the well fix is, is a real game changer for us, so expressly grateful for that.
Thank you to you all for donating, and that's what makes this community so great.
Without a doubt.
Yes. With that, I move to approve the donations and gifts as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 6.28, do we have any future agenda items, anybody has, that they'd like to get on note that we can work on?
We talked a little bit in our, our, our work session about graduation and the presentation of our students. I think we need to look at that a little farther and maybe go into the handbook and start doing some changing with some of the things we passed in the past to make it, you know, support what we'd like our students to look like.
Is there something specific you would like me to bring back at our next board meeting regarding that?
Well, I think we need to study it a little bit.
Okay.
You know, and, and have, have the pleasure of the board go through and what, see what they think and see what they think needs to be changed. And maybe some people don't think anything, but would like to talk about that and...
Would that include the, would you want to include the principal in those discussions?
Yeah, I'd love to have the principal, absolutely.
Would it be appropriate, and I'm asking these questions so I can deliver, would you like the principal to kind of give a, a short presentation on like where we've been, what we've been doing historically, just to, because I don't know.
Yeah, and how much we've changed in the past few years. I think that we've kind of gotten away from some of the things that, that we talked about during that meeting and would like to get back towards.
Kelly, do you have anything?
I would probably, I, no, but just to back up our, talk about what Paul's request is, I would also like to make sure that we have legal counsel probably involved in that as well to make sure we stay within the legal parameters that we would need to in structuring procedures for, you know, dress code or, or what have you at graduation.
Perfect.
Good idea.
I will reach out to legal counsel and see what guardrails or parameters that they have.
Thank you.
Do we need to change the July meeting?
We do need to talk about the date of the July meeting. I will not be here on a regularly scheduled July meeting. I have a family event scheduled. I'm asking the board if we could move it up to July the 7th, which would help us also accomplish the proposed budget? The adopted budget, which we have to do by statute before the 15th. So is, is that agreeable to everyone if we have our regular July board meeting on July the 7th, which is a Monday?
For me?
Yes, yep.
And we should probably make note, have you had a, has anybody had a chance to see if this venue's available or not?
Yes, I have. I, we're just waiting on...
Okay, all right. So we'll make the date, and then we'll have to announce specifically where it's at.
It's gonna be the same time, but it may, it's either here or gonna be at the district office.
Remember, we have to have a hearing before.
Okay.
So again, it's just for public comment. I don't need to do a presentation again, so maybe it's 15?
6:15 public comment, and then start at 6:30, okay?
Okay.
I really, really hope I'm not here then.
We'll call in. Okay. With that said, we don't have any, any requests for calls to the public. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn until our next meeting, which will be July 7th, which is a Monday, at 6:15, place to be determined. Okay?
I'm entertaining, yeah. Yes.
Your motion?
Yeah, I motion to adjourn our meeting.
You move to adjourn, all second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thanks for...